Okay, welcome everyone. I will now call to order the Fridley Public Schools Board meeting Tuesday, June 20th, 7:30 PM. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second? It's been a motion by Sampson, seconded by Prado to approve the agenda for June 20th, 2017. Is there any discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and the motion passes. Next up on our agenda, we have the Spotlight on Recognition. Peggy?
It's my pleasure to introduce Tim Buttweiler, who is the Employee of the Month for June 2017. Mr. Buttweiler is a custodian in the school district, and he has brought a positive attitude and maturity to the job he started as a custodian. He was quickly promoted to a lead position and then went on to his current position as a district custodian. He sets a positive example for all employees with his positive work attitude, strong attention to details, and his ability to multitask at a high level. He also demonstrates the IB learner profile attributes, not because he has studied them, because it is because this is the way he has chosen to approach his life. Tim has used these principles from the day he started. He's excellent people skills, honest, and not afraid of working on the smallest detail, but yet he gets the big picture. It is our privilege to work with him here in the district and an honor to recognize him as the Employee of the Month for June. Thank you, Mr. Buttweiler, for all you do in IST 14. And that was written by Jason Bickler and Dennis Kraft, Directors of Buildings and Grounds.
Wonderful. Congratulations. Okay, then the School Board Scholarship recipient.
So I believe this was back, I forgot the date, of May, middle of May, on a Thursday night in May, we had a wonderful evening, which handed out more than $100,000 to our seniors from the Fridley Schools Foundation and multiple other areas. Your generosity provided this young man, Kevin Brabilla, who is planning on attending Bemidji State University in a double major in Environmental Studies and Criminal Justice. So he's been here all the way through, which is your criteria in your own scholarship. So thank you very much, Board members, for that, and we wish Kevin the very best.
Okay. Next.
And then, just shortly after that, we celebrated graduation with the class of 2017. There were 202 graduates, which also includes ALC students. We had nine full diploma candidates. We had 25 IB scholars. We had one student that had already received an associate degree from Anoka Ramsey Community College. There were 20 avid graduates, 19 Presidential Education Awards, 15 students graduating with honors, 23 with high honors, 21 with the highest honors. And that also includes students that must also have three IB diploma courses with external exams as well. So congratulations to 2017. And as you know, we celebrated that event in a new location this year at Roy Wilkins, and we just saw some numbers that we had 2,100 guests that were able to participate with us, and it was a beautiful evening. So thanks to everybody who made that possible.
Okay, great. Thank you. Next would be the Anoka County Recycling Recognition.
And our own Mary Mueller, the Director of Nutritional Services, is standing next to Jim Cordiak there, and she received the award for the Organic Recycle and Organics and Recycling Program that she started at Stevenson and Hays this year. And she is going to expand that program and move it to the middle school and high school eventually. So stay tuned for more.
She is such a great leader.
Yeah, she is. She's very great.
She's done a lot for our districts, and she's come here. Now we have Superintendent and Staff Reports.
Tonight, it's my pleasure to introduce Amy Cochran, who is the Principal of the ALC Early Childhood and Transition Targeted Services, along with two of her colleagues whom she will introduce.
Hi, good evening. I'm Amy Cochran, and I'm the Principal at the Fridley Alternative Learning Programs, and have the opportunity to oversee the ALC, both the middle school ALC and high school ALC programs. Our transition program, which services our 18- to 21-year-old special education students, our early childhood special education program, and then all of targeted services. So our Learning Academy and after-school programming and our summer school program. So we're going to just give you a highlight of some really great things that went on this year in all of those areas. So with me, I brought Carla Housen, who is the Coordinator at the Early Childhood Special Ed, and then Karen Beckstrand, who helps coordinate our targeted services and our summer school programs. So just to kind of highlight the ALC first, our ALC middle school program, so you may have heard of that as referred to as Phoenix, our middle school program served this year 7th and 8th grade students, and it serviced about 23 students in 7th and 8th grade that were identified by their grade level teachers as needing additional support in behavior and/or academics. And so the way that the support looked is that they would receive support in their Language A class and their Humanities class in the Phoenix program, so that teacher would really work to support them within that. He would teach those subjects, and then he would go out into the mainstream classes with the students, along with paraprofessional, in the areas of math, reading, and science. And so really offered extra support to students with their academics in those mainstream areas. Our high school ALC had two components to it. One is our day school, and then the second is our night school. So I'll kind of highlight our day school first. This year, we serviced 108 students at our day school, and 17 of those students graduated. Majority of those students, 15 of the 17, were 2017 grads, so they graduated on time with their class. Some exciting things that we did this year at the day school or that we had offered the students is we got on three college campuses, which was really great for students to be able to get out and see at Hennepin Tech, Anoka Ramsey. We really took students out onto the college campuses. In addition, that we held a college and career fair at the ALC, so brought in some variety of colleges and then careers that were able to give students a resource fair. They were able to walk around and gather resources. They brought in a lot of guest speakers. They brought in five guest speakers from local colleges and then businesses that were able to help for opportunities for students and make connections to the community. And then we had the YMCA and the Alexandria House come in regularly. They came in once a week to partner with us, one on healthy relationships, and then the second on students that are in transition or just needed help with any kind of housing needs. Then our night school program started in October, so mid-October, and then it went through May. And the night school program was one day a week, and it serviced students from our high school and from the ALC. And then you'll notice also, 42 students that were outside of the city of Fridley who came in just to use our night school program. Majority of the students did come from the high school, so they would go to the high school during the day and then come to us Tuesday evenings to pick up additional courses. So 126 total students this year, and because of our night school, 69 students that were seniors were able to graduate because of the night school. So it really is a very beneficial program to students to be able to help with the credit recovery and any areas that they need additional support in. So here's just some pictures of our day school students, one at Hennepin Tech, and then our college and career fair that we had brought in. Some fun pictures. I'm looking forward to next school year for the ALC. Couple of things that are changing and that we're really, really excited about. The middle school or the Phoenix program, we are going to be adding services in 6th grade. So Phoenix will now hit 6th, 7th, and 8th grade, hopefully with the opportunity to service more students. And then we are going to add a teacher. So students will now receive support in the Phoenix program in the areas of math and in Language A, and then they will receive their mainstream support then in humanities and reading and science. So we'll be offered an additional layer of support. And the idea that we really have is being able to really meet students where they're at. And so if I need support in math, Language A, and then I also need support out of my mainstream classes, we can offer that. But some students might only need the support just in Phoenix and not necessarily out. So the idea is that we can really tier with the additional teacher. We can really kind of tier the support of what students need. And so if they need additional support, they can have that versus when there's just one teacher. We were missing that layer. And then by adding a grade, the other idea is really to be able to work on a transition program out of Phoenix, so that they really have received the support 6th, 7th, and then thinking about how are we going to transition them so that they're ready to go to high school with less support. So hopefully, we've built that support up for them in, you know, 6th and 7th grade, so that they're ready to kind of be out on their own then for 8th grade and before they move to the high school. And then some changes for our high school ALC. Work experience is something that we've really been working on adding, and right now, students have to take night school in order to get the work experience, or this current school year they did. So next school year, we're going to add work experience into our day program, so that all students can access that, you know, day school and night school students. And then a proposed schedule change that we have kind of put forward is that the teacher day would be extended, so that we are not bringing in, so this current school year, we were bringing in teachers from the high school to teach night school. Next year, by extending the day, our current ALC teachers will be able to be the ones teaching night school, and it'll be offered four days a week instead of one day a week, so that we'll have the opportunity to service additional students. Also with the idea that our current ALC students are really part of an advisory program, our teachers really pick up that mentorship. They really work hard to be advisors to students, to talk about credits and, you know, post-secondary plans, and they really serve in that advisory role. Our night school in the past has not had that component, and so with the proposed schedule change, we would like to propose that that happens to all students that are coming. So even if they're dueling, you know, if they're at the high school during the day and they come to us the four days a week for the evening, that they would also have an advisor at the ALC that would continue to work the same way that our day school students work. So it's a really exciting change.
So what are the hours of night school?
Yeah, so proposed for next year would be 3:15 to 5:15.
And what was it this year?
It was one day a week from 3:15 to 4:30, Tuesday nights.
And did you find you were missing a lot of students? Are you going to be able to, I mean, that's a lot more time that you're spending?
Yes, so the idea would be this, so for the next school year, they could, two nights a week, so maybe Mondays and Wednesdays would be English and Science, and then Tuesday, Thursday would be the opposite subject areas. I think one of the things is sometimes, you know, it's one night a week, so if students couldn't get there on Tuesday night, then they wouldn't come. And so now they have the opportunity to, Monday through Thursday, to be able to come, have a lot more access to teachers at all times, you know, versus just that small chunk of time on Tuesdays.
Very good. Nice.
All right, so Alyssa Blatter, our lead teacher over at Transition, couldn't be with us tonight, so I'll just kind of highlight some exciting things that went on at Transition this year. Four students made adequate progress on their IP, and they were able to receive diplomas. That was prior to aging out at 21. And then four students also received diplomas that did age out. So a total of eight students received diplomas this year over at Transition. Some things that they were really working on over there was the work-based learning, volunteering, really getting out into the community. And so some highlights of that, five students had work-based learning experiences within the district. One of those students at the end of the year was hired on as an employee, just because of their excellent volunteer service. We had a student that volunteered at Springbrook Nature Center, and then another at Anoka County Library, so really able to kind of access the community resources and partners. Of the 17 that started at Transition, eight of them at the end of the year were employed, and that was through the help of our lead teacher over there, who really worked hard to give them experiences and help kind of job coach them. And then students did a lot of outings. One of the things, main goals, was to get them on metro transit, really get them comfortable with using, you know, the city transportation. So they did a lot of outings from All of America, North Town, they went to the YMCA weekly to do physical activity, just got out into Cub Foods and did a lot of community outings weekly, so that was a large goal of Transition.
And then a question regarding the students. Is it ever a goal to move some of these students into post-secondary education?
Yeah, so, you know, I don't have the exact number. There is a handful of students that were taking courses over at Century College this year through their, through our 916 program, to have access to kind of that post-secondary, you know, classes, and they could choose things like cosmetology. I think there's, you know, somewhere in cosmetology, there's working with cars and mechanics. So there's lots of opportunities based on their interest to go over to Century during the day.
Okay. Thank you.
Early childhood special education has changed a lot, especially with the incoming of VPK this year. All of our students that are on IEPs and IFSPs are served in inclusive or natural settings. So the children that are birth to three, we see in their home or daycare, or if they're enrolled in ECFE classes from birth to three. And then the ECSE students that are three to five were in ECFE preschool classes or pre-K classes, or were served in their daycare setting. And all our staff this year received OEA training out of acoustic emission, so now we can actually do hearing tests on kids right there in those sites. And we also participated in FAST trainings, the reading assessment, with all the VPK teachers. So we'll be working with them on that.
Can you tell us what, for our listeners, can you say what VPK is?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
It's the voluntary pre-K that started this year and will continue. And then in this school year, we served 168 children and their families through intake, screening assessment, educational planning, and providing educational services.
Do we still partner with Columbia Heights in the ECSE, or do we have our own program?
We have our own program. It used to be Fridley served birth to three, and Columbia Heights served three to five.
Okay.
But we've had our own programs for years.
Okay, thank you.
And the ECSE staff serves on the Anoka County Early Childhood Mental Health Committee, and they help me grow Region 11 Child Public Awareness Committee.
And I will say that Carla Housen is known at the state level as well for her work as the coordination here, and so she's done a fabulous job of being a part and being a spokesperson for us at the state level, as well as bringing back information over the years. So I really thank her for the work that she's done there.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Can I ask, Carla, the 168 children that ECSE served this year, is that higher, lower, about the same, or are you seeing changes in?
Higher every year.
Higher, every year? Okay.
Especially when Help Me Grow came in statewide, because now it comes through Help Me Grow first. So people can go online and refer children. Doctors refer, parents refer, a lot of child protection, social work referrals. Child protection is mandated to refer. So if there's any children in a home where a child has been referred to child protection, then all the children in that home are referred if they're under the age of five.
Okay. Thank you for...
Okay, good evening. So I'm here to talk about our targeted services and our summer school targeted services. We do Learn Academy at our elementaries after school, usually starting in October and running until the very beginning of May. And then, of course, our summer school program, which we are currently in. So we'll talk first about the after-school Learn Academy. We had 396 students that were enrolled elementary. We had 260, and then, as you can see, the middle school, 136. Our elementary and middle school programs did run from the end of October to the beginning of May. Elementary, we meet from 4:00 to 5:15. Teachers take the kids at 3:45, take them to snack, and then actually start instruction at 4:00. And the middle school, of course, runs for one hour after the end of their day. 21 teachers, and we changed to having two program coordinators at the elementary, myself at Hays, and Debbie Ryan at Stevenson. So we were there overseeing and helping teachers as they needed while the actual teachers, the other teachers were doing the actual instruction. And then seven teachers at the middle school, and Terry Rees is still serving as a program coordinator at the middle school. Currently, of course, we're right in the middle of our summer school program. Last year at the elementary, we had 200 students attending, 139 at the elementary level, and 69 at the middle, and then 61 high school students. Elementary was at Stevenson last year, because Hays was under construction with our new kitchen, and they sort of flipped. We are now at Hays, while Stevenson gets their new kitchen. And of course, it was at the middle school last year for high school and middle school. And this year, currently, we have 195 kids enrolled in the elementary, 98 the middle, and 137 high school students registered. We just did a count quick today that at the elementary, we started with close to 255 registrations total between special ed targeted services and our other targeted services with our Learning Academy kids. And we are, we were at 197 in attendance today.
Do you, what, oh, I'm sorry. Do you know why the high change in the high school students? From 61 to 137?
I don't know.
That's huge.
That's a good question, yeah. That is really...
Well, I think, I think part of it is the fact we're in the high school this year. So it was kind of hard last year to go back to the middle school, to go to the summer school.
The mind leap they couldn't make.
They're kind of in their home territory right now.
Yeah. May I just ask, what determines if a child's eligible for summer school, or if they...
Speaking from the, from the elementary standpoint, because that's primarily where I do my work, is that we have got teachers that refer. Over the course of the year, teachers look at testing scores. They also look, quite honestly, with the new FAST system that we're using, the new FAST and PRESS that we're using in the elementary, we are able to target those students that are slightly below grade level, kind of those cuss students and that type of stuff, because at least at the elementary, for the world I live in, I know that our really below-line level readers do receive reading services with our new reading teachers and that type of stuff. So we look at test scores, we look at the guided reading level groupings and things like that. A lot is teacher referral. Quite honestly, we also look at sometimes, is it also a good thing, especially maybe in the summer, for the social skills and of things that summer school can also employ? Because we have some really cool things happening. We are partnering, partnering with the Lee Carlson groups, are in our schools right now, working with our kids as well on some of those social-emotional things. We also have got the specialist model at our elementary that we're doing, which is we have got physical education, art, and coding that the kids are also allowed to go to as part of their daily rotation. And so those things have really added a neat element, where sometimes it's a really good thing for those kids to, it's, you guys got to come watch the coding. It's just so cool to see these kids, what they're doing.
Coding's been here.
Yeah, I know. It's so cool. I just get so excited about it. And that type of stuff. So we have some other things that we sometimes take into effect, too. Would these be also a good fit for some of our kids over the summer, especially to just kind of keep some of those social skills and that type of stuff going? We are hoping to expand as well our scope and sequence of our after-school and summer programs moving forward, so we've been talking.
How long of a day is the summer school? Is it like a full day, or is it just a couple hours in the morning, or...
Middle school is 8:00 to 11:00, and then they do get lunch. And elementary is 9:00 to noon, and they also are fed lunch during that time, yep.
Wow.
And that is all we have for you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your time.
Thanks.
And I think on the agenda tonight, later on, there is an announcement that Ms. Cochran will be the middle school principal for next year as well, so congratulations.
Wonderful. Okay. Mr. Hammer.
And the hammer. Yeah, so tonight, we're here to present the 1718 adopted budget. My name's Matthew Hammer. I'm the Director of Finance for the Fridley School District. Let me just get rocking and rolling here. Okay, so our budget planning always revolves around our five board priorities. From the bottom up, if we just start improving parent and school partnership, building that financial stability, maintaining a safe and positive learning environment, using our most effective instructional strategies, and then always trying to improve academic achievement. This is a picture that Peggy referred to earlier with some of our graduates. So enrollment drives everything when it comes to Minnesota school funding, and this is the class of 2030 right here. These, we had 95 kids attend our voluntary pre-K program this last year. These students will hopefully be our kindergartens. We're going to welcome, welcome them to kindergarten next year. Brendan Sconsilius, the Minnesota Education Commissioner, came to our July, our June 8th ceremony and congratulated these kids. So we're looking forward to having them in kindergarten next year, and they can be part of these 3,025 kids we're projecting in 1718. So this is a look at our enrollment over time. If you, if you go back to enrollment in 1314, we had about 2,900 kids. We're projected at the end of 1617 to have roughly 3,025 students, and that same projection we're carrying forward to 1718. This is the breakdown, just kind of delineates where they're located at K4, 58, 912. As you can see, our elementary levels are projecting some decreases, where our middle school and high school areas are projecting increases. This is something that we've looked at over time, and as we've looked at it with Hazel Reinhardt, who does some demographic analysis for us, it's something that we're, we're looking at predicting and using her predictions. Our general fund balance, unassigned fund balance, is the measurement of our financial health and what we use as a measure of our financial health. Our board policy is to make sure that we keep a fund balance, unassigned fund balance percentage between 7% and 10%. And right now, we're projecting, at the end of 1718, our fund balance percentage will be 7.4%, roughly $2.5 million in unassigned fund balance. As you can see, over the last few years, we've trended in the right direction, and we're right at the bottom of that fund balance policy. Revenues by source, this is our general fund revenues. So in FY '16, you can see 80% of our revenues, roughly 83% of our revenues were state, were received from state sources. About 13%, 14% come from local sources, and the others, the other 3% comes from federal sources. This has stayed, over the last couple of years, has stayed very static. If you go back a couple of years prior, more of it was coming through local sources when the state property tax shift was in play. But that has now went away, and we're back to our 9010 revenue payments in the year that we get them. So general fund budget, our unassigned revenues and unassigned expenditures are projected, we're projecting a surplus of around $35,000, which is 7.4% at the end of June 30, 2018. This is just an overall look at the percentage breakdown of where the dollars are spent programmatically in the general fund. This gives you the breakdown, the different programs at the state UFRS level. But this is a better breakdown and a better look at it. About 80% or 80 cents on the dollar of our, of our funding that we receive in the general fund and our expenditures goes directly to support students. And the other break, the other 20% goes to the other buildings and grounds, district support services, and administration. This is something that we strive to keep around that 80% mark, and we, as a district, when you compare us to our peers, do a good job in, in making sure those dollars are directly going to students. Our expense budget on the general fund side largely made up, 75% of it goes to salaries and benefits, with the other areas, purchase services, supplies, capital expenditures making up the other pieces. That piece of, in purchase services, that 16%, that's largely made up of transportation dollars that go to pay for our contracted transportation services. On the food service side of the world, we're projecting a deficit spend for fiscal year 1718. This is a purposeful deficit spend in regards to some kitchen improvements that we need to make at our middle school this year. So revenues are projected to be under expenditures by about $77,000, putting our fund balance in the food service fund at about 7%, or about $482,000. We're also, as part of the process of, to make sure that we keep up with our expenditures as we're projecting our food costs to go up about 5% to 6% next year, we're, we're going to have a nickel increase in our, in our lunch prices. So that'll put our, our secondary lunch price at $2.85, and our elementary lunch price at $2.60.
And Matt, can you, can you confirm, has it been a couple of years since there's been an increase to the lunch prices?
It's been at least two years. I think three years ago was the last time we did a lunch price increase.
Okay. Thank you.
On the community service side of the world, we're projecting revenues to be under expenditures by roughly $10,000. There's some things going on in the food service, or in the community ed world. The main one is the middle school construction project that's going on for the summer of '18 that's limiting our access to the pool and limiting some of that revenue that we normally see for our aquatics programs over the summer. That's normally equated for about $20,000 of revenue that we don't have in the foods or in the Fund 4 program for FY '18. But overall, fund balance sitting at about $212,000 for, at the end of '18. Then we go into our other non, what I call our non-major funds, or other major funds, or other funds. Our Capital Projects Fund is where our referendum... Our capital projects fund is where our, our referendum dollars are sitting right now. And that's the large expenditure that's going on there, about four, almost $5 million in FY, FY '18. Our internal service fund is where our self-funded medical plans and dental plans sit. We're looking at a surplus there to cover our run out in medical costs, about $437,000. And then our debt service fund is where our amortization schedules and our OPEP trust sits. And those dollars there, our revenues are projected to be just under expenditures of about $25,000. So that's our 1718 budget. And do you have any questions?
What is the, I'm sorry if, if I missed this. What is the projected increase in funding, student funding?
It's 2% general education increase in the basic formula for, for 201718.
Okay, thank you.
So if there's any questions from the public, my email address is there, and anybody's free to get ahold of me. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we move on to the business action items. First would be a motion for the approval of the 201718 budget.
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Sampson, seconded by Riddle, to approve the 201718 budget. Is there any discussion?
No, but I want to thank Matt and his staff for all the hard work that they put into the budget.
I'll second that. Very good job.
I'll third that.
All right, fourth. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion passes. Next would be resolution approving Northeast Metro Intermediate School District 916 Long-Term Facility Maintenance Budget.
So as part of our 916 membership, there's a piece of the levy component that the intermediate school districts, such as 916, pass back through their local taxpayers. And this, this piece this year is to pay for some asbestos abatement that's going on at Capital View and some of their projects around the district. So this is a levy that comes to the district. It's costs about $10,000, our percentages. And that'll end up on our pay '18 levy.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve?
Seconded.
It's been a motion by Riddle, seconded by Sampson, to approve the Northeast Metropolitan Intermediate School District Number 916 Long-Term Facility Maintenance Budget and authorizing the inclusion of, excuse me, of a proportionate share of those projects in the district's application for long-term maintenance revenue. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, excuse me. It is a resolution. Clerk, call the role.
Ms. Delvo?
Aye.
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 And the resolution passes. Thank you. Then we are fortunate again every month to have a resolution accepting gifts. This month, the following persons donated to Hayes Elementary for a total of $200. Vicki Furker, Val Stevens, and Petey Driscoll. Following people donated to Stevenson Elementary School for a total of $7,000. The Fridley Lions for a playground equipment addition. And the following people donated to Fridley Public Schools for a total of $100. And that was Walmart for, the Fridley Walmart for the back-to-school resource fair, fair that will be coming up in August. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
It's been a motion by Delvo, seconded by Proado, to accept the gifts and thank the donors for the contributions. This is a resolution. So clerk, please call the role.
Ms. Delvo?
Aye.
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 And the resolution passes. Next, we have our consent agenda. This includes quite, this is quite lengthy tonight. Minutes of the school board business meeting and work session held on May 16, 2017. Monthly financial reports, new contracts, amendments, leaves of absence, terminations, resignations, and retirements. The 201617 QCOM report, Superintendent Peggy Flathman's continuing contract for year three. School Resource Officer Agreement for 201718 and 201819. The Adult Basic Education Lease. Holmgren Lease for the Alternative Learning Center. Approval of grants. Anoka County Children and Family Council Grant for $49,125 towards opening doors for English language learners. It's a partnership between Fridley, Columbia Heights, and Spring Lake Park School Districts. Award for AdSIS Aid. And update dates Fridley High School Chinese Students' Visit to China on June 21st to July 6, 2017. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move to approve?
Second.
I'd also like to comment, also just thanking a couple of retirements that are listed here. Longtime teacher for us, Pat Barrett. Been around since 1985, almost as long as, you know, he almost joined up when I, before, you know, before I left, but just by a couple of years there. But he'll be retiring here in June. And also Roxanne Johnson from her Mars Coordinator position. She's been with us for, since 2004, I believe. So I'd like to thank them for all their efforts and work with the district.
Thank you. All right. So there's been a motion by Riddle, seconded by Proado, to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And the motion passes. Next, we'll move on to the written information, beginning with student enrollment.
You see on page 98 is the monthly report. And then for good measure, we add the very last day of school. So you have in front of you the complete look at nose counts, as we refer to them, on a monthly basis. You can see that Matthew's projection of 3,025 students, we should be very close to being on that mark for the end of this year. And then, of course, then the projections for next year. So here is the complete look at the year in terms of that. So along with the other reports that give you the various options that students have. And by the way, this report is brought to you by Roxanne Johnson on a monthly basis. So we thank her for the work that she's been doing.
Thank you. Now we move on to first reading of policies.
In the packet, I will take the first one, and then my colleagues, Amina Aftedal and Laura Seifert-Hurtling, will do the rest of them. The first one is simply a change in the superintendent selection policy, which just says that the superintendent is the chief executive office, officer of the school district, not the board. And evidently, that has been on policy in many, many policies throughout the state. So MSBA gave us that change just recently, along with several others. So Amina's
So presented for its first reading, I'll start with Policy 509, Enrollment of Non-Resident Students. It's being updated based on a legal update to include a priority in enrollment lotteries for children of school district staff. And we move on to the next policy, which is the Internet Acceptable Use Policy 524. That's being updated, kind of as we update technologies, to include information on cloud servers. So, so there is a district liabilities limited on cloud server information. Policy 601, School District Curriculum and Instructional Goals. This is being updated based on some legal changes. We are making a shift from No Child Left Behind to Every Child Succeeds Act. So those updates are included in there. Included in there is also equity for gifted and talented students and access to effective teachers across the board for all students, including those students in poverty, as well as the new legal requirements for literacy interventions to address all students who are reading below grade level. And that, that intervention must be a scientifically researched-based intervention and instruction. So those changes are being placed in Policy 601. 603 is also being updated with the literacy intervention for curriculum development, including that, the goal that all literacy instruction is provided with scientifically-based reading instruction. So that's the update for 603. 604 on instructional curriculum is being updated to include the requirement that all students beginning in grade nine in 1718 must take a civics exam. And that civics exam will mean questions from the United States Citizenship Test. And then finally, Policy 805 on Waste Reduction is being updated to include the requirements to have recyclable purchases for printers and toner cartridges. I present those for their first reading.
Okay, thank you. Laura, you're up.
Thank you. I have three policies for the first reading. First is Policy 414, mandated reporting of child neglect or physical or sexual abuse. And this is updated to include the presence of fetal alcohol syndrome in the child's first year of life under the definition of neglect. And also, under the sexual abuse, they're adding sex trafficking language. So those are the two updates for that policy. Policy 525, Violence Prevention. There is an update to add students who engage in assault or violent behavior being removed from the classroom immediately and for a period of time deemed appropriate by the principal. So that's the addition to that policy. And Policy 612, Development of Family or Parent and Family Policies is now the title change. It used to be Parent Involvement. So there's language chains in there just to make it more engagement and parent and family friendly language. And those are the three updates that I bring to you today.
Okay. Thank you. So we will bring all these back next month for their second reading. Okay. Now we have reports from school board members, beginning with Northwest Suburban Integration School District Joint Powers Board Meeting held on May 17. Chris?
Yeah, the main that was, I don't believe we actually had a quorum on the May 17 date. So we actually had to have a special makeup one in June, and I forget exactly what date it was, June 6, I think, or something around there. But the majority of, that we were dealing with, two items were getting our health benefits package authorized, as well as the new contract for the executive director.
Okay, great. Thank you. Schools for Equity in Education Meeting held on May 25, 2017. Carol Thornton.
Yes, I, excuse me, I did attend that meeting. I think the big change there was the 2% increase that Matt mentioned. That was the huge piece there. We had a couple, School the Finance Director, Tom Melcher, I believe, and the government, government relations director there as well. So that was a big one for an increase in the early childhood and family education for the ECFE. Also, there was two speakers on the early learning programs, and they discussed that the success that they've had. Erica Mass, who's the executive director, with Close the Gaps by Five, which offers tools and information to help low-income families with quality childcare. So what we've been doing here in Fridley and moving in that direction. Also Steve Kerr, who was the executive director of Community Education and Government Relations with Anoka Hennepin School District. So they both had good points about early intervention is the key. And is happy that Fridley is moving in that direction. And we're doing those things now. And with our pre-K, voluntary pre-K class of 2030, it was, I attended that and got to meet Brenda, and that was very, very nice. So I feel like we're moving in the right direction.
Thank you. The Association of Metropolitan School District's Board Meeting held on May 26. Mary Kay.
Yes. Well, it's essentially a repeat of the Schools for Equity in Education. There are two different groups that have two different, Fridley happens to participate in both because we're, we're a metropolitan school district, but we're also of the size that we fit into the Schools in Equity and Education Group. So just to say, it's not a redundancy in information because they are different groups, but we learned very much the same things that Carol just shared, and also had Tom Melcher come and share the legislative results with us.
Okay, thank you. The Northeast Metro 916 Board Meeting held on June 7. I attended that. Few of the items that were highlighted, I had brought several months ago about the new facility that's being built in Oakdale, and that's called Pankalo. Well, there will be an open house for the school board members, and that is Tuesday, August 1st, 1st, from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. So that's really exciting to see that coming to light there and having students starting there in September. There was a presentation on model classrooms, and it was put on by a couple of the technology integrationists. And they shared the district's progress with implementing model classrooms. And this is something that Fridley has been using for some time now and has had quite a bit of success with that. The, their 201718 budget was approved, and the membership fee was increased by $1 per adjusted pupil unit. And these rates, the dollar increase, that is, they're calculated by the state of Minnesota. So we approved that budget. Then I guess we just had some retirements, food service agreements, and regular maintenance, things like that. So now, the important future school board dates, the Northeast, or excuse me, Northwest Suburban Integration School District Joint Powers Board Meeting will be held June 21, 6:15 at their offices. Northeast Metro 916 will have a work session, also June 21 at 4:00 p.m. at Bel Air School in White Bear Lake. The next Fridley Public Schools Board Meeting will be July 18, 2017, work session, 5:30 p.m. City Hall Conference Room A, Open Forum, 7:00 p.m. City Hall Conference Room A, followed by the business meeting, 7:30 p.m. in the city council chambers. Is there any other items? If not, we will adjourn the meeting if there's a motion.
Motion to adjourn? Second.
Okay, there's been a motion by Proado, seconded by Thornton, to adjourn at 8:19 p.m. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And the meeting is adjourned.